I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Calhoun Parish Police Jury for Thursday, November 17, 2016. We're gonna have the invocation and pledge of allegiance by Mr. Guidry. Please stand.
May we all bow heads. Heavenly Father, we come this evening in the most humble and gracious way that we know how, giving thanks upon all the many blessings that you've bestowed upon us as your Christian people. We ask for a special blessing upon the state of Louisiana. We ask for a special blessing upon Calhoun Parish. We ask for a special blessing upon the city of Lake Charles. And Father, we ask for a blessing among each one of us that's seated here today, that we be honest, fair, and uplifting in all that we do here tonight, because we only are here to uplift your name and to glorify you, Heavenly Father. Father, we just thank you, and we humble ourselves to all the things that you've given us as the Almighty. Father, we thank you, and we love you. We ask these many blessings in your son named Jesus. Amen.
Amen. May we all face the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Madam Secretary.
Yes, sir. Mr. Angelique.
Here.
Mr. Barris.
Here.
Mr. Brain.
Here.
Mr. Collins.
Here.
Mr. Farnum.
Here.
Mr. Guidry.
Here.
Mr. Gilery.
Here.
Mr. Hunter.
Here.
Mr. Latour.
Here.
Ms. Mayo.
Here.
Vice President McMillan.
Here.
Mr. Scott.
Here.
Mrs. Trimmie.
I've got one that facts.
Here. Mr. White.
Here.
And President Landry.
Here.
Everyone's present.
Thank you, Ms. Catherine. Before we get started, we ask that everyone please silence their cell phones. If you also, if you wish to speak on any item that's on the agenda, we need for you to fill out a blue slip that you'll find there at the front of the room and turn it into someone at the staff desk. Thank you. Item four, appearance by Ms. Margie Harrison, Director of the Calhoun Parish Public Library System. Mr. Bean.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to give you the opportunity tonight to meet Ms. Harrison. I appreciate her coming. Margie Harrison is the new director at the library as of August of this year. So she's still getting acclimated, but she's hit the ground running, and they're getting off to a good start. Margie comes to us by way of Salem, Oregon, where she was a employee of the state library system there, but she also has a lot of experience in local and state library systems in other parts of the country. So with that, I'll ask Margie to come up, just so you can put a face to a name, and welcome her to Calhoun Parish.
Go ahead, Ms. Harrison.
Hello. Thank you. Thank you for this opportunity, Brian. I'm glad to be here and was excited and looking forward to meeting all of our police jurors. Yeah, so I've been here just a few months, and I am hitting the ground running, I guess, getting to know all about our community and all the branches within, library branches within our communities, and learning about all of that. And we have a great library system here, so I'm really happy to be here. My family and I are acclimating well, I believe. I'm enjoying the weather, I must say. It's nice to have sun in November, so. So, thank you.
Well, welcome to southwest Louisiana. We have some speakers, if you would, just hold tight. Mr. Gilery?
Yes, Ms. Harrison. I was just gonna say, for the Epps Library, I'd love for you to bring programs over there as much as you can, you know, anything you can do for the Epps Library over there would be good.
Certainly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. McMillan?
Biggest change, getting here in south Louisiana versus Oregon. What have you found that's really totally different than what you would expect?
Oh, my goodness. Well, I can say I love the food here.
Yeah.
It's great.
The people are great, too.
And the people are great, too. Everybody's been warm and welcoming.
Welcome.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions? Ms. Trimmie?
No, I just wanna let you know that I'm gonna really make a big effort to try to make some of the meetings. I've been liaisoned for many, many years to the library, and I had some challenges, I guess you could say. So now I'm on my way back on the go side. So I'm gonna try to make some of your meetings. I know that y'all are doing good work, and you have a wonderful board.
Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome to Louisiana.
Thank you.
Mr. Scott?
Now that you've had a chance to get involved at the library, what's the biggest plus you see to our system here?
Oh, my goodness. We have such a wide variety of resources available, and, you know, the programming that we offer, it's innovative, it's creative, it's diverse. I love that we can access resources electronically, you know, as well, so that it's available, you know, wherever we are, and so those are some of the great things, I think.
And what about our weakness?
Oh, goodness.
We gotta have a weakness. I mean, you gotta have something.
You already passed the interview.
Yeah, well, I've only been here for three months, I haven't found one yet.
That's a good answer.
Thank you, Ms. President.
Any other comments? Thank you.
Nice meeting you.
Thank you. Nice meeting you.
Item five, presentation of a proclamation to the Girlie Girls DE Defy Team in partnership with the Louisiana Campaign for Tobacco-Free Living in support of the Great American Smokeout on November 17, 2016. Mr. Farnum.
Thank you. I'll get down to the podium. I'm sure the proclamation is there.
I think it is, sir.
I guess, as most people know, today is the Great American Smokeout, and what a better time to be able to present a proclamation to this fine group of young ladies that represent the future of our great parish and state. And I'll go ahead and read this proclamation from the state of Louisiana, Parish of Calhoun, whereas the Louisiana Campaign for Tobacco-Free Living joins the American Cancer Society, encouraging all to join the Great American Smokeout, supporting tobacco users to quit for at least one day or to quit for good. And whereas tobacco use is the single most preventable cause of death in Louisiana and the United States, and secondhand smoke contains more than 7,000 chemicals with at least 250 known to be harmful, and at least 69 cause cancer. And whereas in Louisiana, the percentage of adults who currently smoke cigarettes is 21.9% according to the 2015 BRFS data, with Louisiana ranking 46th in smoking prevalence, and whereas many smokers want to quit tobacco, and reduction in disease rates among current smokers is best achieved through cessation. And whereas evidence-based best practices show that smoke-free policies help smokers quit, and few youths start smoking in communities with smoke-free policies in place. And whereas quitting smoking and using tobacco is known to reduce the risk of lung cancer, other cancers, cardiovascular disease, and chronic lung disease, and there are several free resources available to assist you. And whereas free services and resources are available for smokers who are Louisiana residents who began smoking prior to September 1, 1988, through the Louisiana Outline, the Smoking Cessation Trust, or, there's a couple of phone numbers here, 504-529-5665, or 855-259-6346, and includes such services as phone coaching and support, physician's visit to arrange for cessation groups, and individual's counseling and smoking cessation medications provided by your physician. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the Police Jury of Calhoun Parish, Louisiana, and regular session convened on the 17th day of November, 2016, that November 17, 2016, is hereby proclaimed as the Great American Smokeout Day. Throughout Calhoun Parish, in recognition and support of this movement, encourages all citizens who smoke or use smokeless tobacco to demonstrate to themselves and their children that they can quit using tobacco by joining the Great American Smokeout. Thus done and passed on the date above inscribed, signed by our parish president. I'll call the Girlie Girls up, and they'll come up and grab you.
Y'all come on up if y'all wanna say a few words, and then also we'll take a photograph.
Yeah.
That'd be good, Mr. Landry. President Landry, please.
Good evening. My name is Anita Barker, founder and mentor for the Girlie Girls Mentoring Program. Girlie Girls Mentoring Program is a nonprofit organization dedicated to building academic and social excellence in young ladies ages 12 to 18. Our mission is to empower girls to achieve their full potential and become influential members of their community. Our approach is simple: by providing these young ladies with education, support, and mentoring, we are developing tomorrow's leaders, and more importantly, positive role models. My goal is to inspire, educate, and motivate girls to dream big and accomplish their goals. We are honored to partner with the Louisiana Tobacco-Free Living Campaign of southwest Louisiana to educate peers and adults about the negative impacts of tobacco. It is my privilege to introduce to you some of our members who have found their voice, the Defy Team. President Erin Black. Vice President Wontressa Rossett. Secretary Natasha Howard. Shelby Theory. Malia Baudelonne. Shantavia Miller. Janisha Weeks. Kaitlin Ellie. Mackenzie Brown. Brianna Simpson. And Mia Hillard. Now, I'd like to turn it over to team members Erin Black and Malia Baudelonne. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Before I ask anybody if they have any questions, I'll give you guys a few facts, okay? Is that okay?
Sure.
Did you know Louisiana's teen tobacco usage rates are among the highest in the nation, with approximately 38.3% of high school and 15.6% of middle school students in Louisiana using tobacco? Across our state, anyone under the age of 18 can purchase electronic nicotine or vaping devices because they are not regulated. In fact, there has been an increase in sale, advertisement, and marketing of electronic nicotine devices to youth. Tobacco manufacturers spend over 90% of their marketing dollars advertising in retail stores. In Louisiana, 223.7 million is spent on promoting tobacco products each year. Youth from across Louisiana are standing up to tobacco companies who continue to target us. We are the southwest Louisiana Defy Team. The Louisiana Campaign for Tobacco-Free Living funds guaranteed organizations through the state to educate youth age 11 to 17 about leading healthy lives, free of tobacco, the tobacco industry's marketing tactics, the dangers of tobacco, and support tobacco control advocacy for smoke-free hair. Anyone have any questions?
Mr. Guidry?
One of our first projects will be to survey randomly selected tobacco outlets in Calhoun Parish. We will be looking at the number of tobacco advertisements located inside and outside of the stores, the content of these ads, the types of tobacco products advertised and sold, and if the ads or products are in places visible or accessible to youth, such as near candy or toys, or at child's eye level. The Defy Team will also conduct advocacy activities to raise awareness about tobacco advertising targeting youth, including writing letters to the editors of local newspapers and meeting the local elected officials, I'm sorry. Our research will be complete in the spring, and we would like to be invited back to share our findings with you as we evaluate tobacco marketing tactics towards our vulnerable populations. Who knows, we might even have recommendations to share. The Girlie Girls Defy Team is hard at work in Calhoun Parish to educate and motivate our peers to never start using tobacco products, including cigarettes, vaping, and smoking smokeless tobacco. Tonight, the Calhoun Parish Police Jury has an opportunity to support our work, protect our community, and affect positive change. We strongly affect the proposed Calhoun Parish smoking ordinance that you'll be voting on later tonight, and ask you to please pass it as written and unanimous. Thank you for your support and allowing us to speak to you today.
Thank you. Thank you.
We appreciate you girls coming up here tonight, and it's inspirational to see y'all step up for the community and take this on. It's, I know there's a lot of peer pressure that y'all will probably face with in school on a daily basis, and it takes a lot of courage to step up and defy that peer pressure, and we really appreciate y'all for that. So if y'all'd like to step up here and take a picture.
I would.
Mr. Farnum, first. I think Mr. Guidry had a question.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I've been knowing Ms. Anita for quite a while, and I just wanna commend her on the work that she's done with these young ladies, because these are gonna be the future of this city, parish, and state. And I just wanna say to you young ladies, continue to do what you're doing, always stand for something in life, because it'll make a difference as to who you'll be. And Ms. Anita, again, whatever we can do to help you and continue to do what you do with these young ladies, by all means, I want you to let us know, okay?
Thank you.
Great job.
I just wanna say, I truly appreciate Kevin. He is, Girlie Girls is nonprofit, and he is truly one of our ongoing supporters. So I really, truly appreciate him, and Mr. Gilery as well. So we thank you guys.
I would invite the jurors to come out front, and let's take a picture.
We'd also love to have y'all back when y'all finish your research also.
Louisiana regarding the Workforce Scholarship Program, which provides financial resources and support services for craft and skills training. Ms. Judson?
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight on behalf of the Community Foundation. Our mission is to connect people who care with causes that matter. And obviously, right now in southwest Louisiana, workforce development is a cause that matters. And several years ago, SASAL came to us and said, "We've created a workforce resource guide, and we now wanna take it to the next level to be able to help support people who live in our area and that are unemployed or underemployed. We wanna be able to help them get the skills training that they need so that they can take part in the economic boom." So together, we created this Workforce Scholarship Fund. Electrols LNG then joined in as another funder. We have, to date, given over 79 people the opportunity to participate in the program, and we have some other folks with us tonight that wanna give you a few real-life examples about that. I'm first gonna ask Kim Cusamano from SASAL to talk about what makes this program unique.
Hi, members. Thanks for the opportunity. Just very quickly, so when SASAL reached out to the foundation to start this program, we first spoke to the folks at Sewella and ABC School and asked them what was needed beyond just tuition dollars, and it was identified some barriers, or some barriers to success that typically don't get realized until the student is actually in the program. Things like needing transportation, or childcare services, or connections to other health services. Most of these things available in the public sector and the nonprofit sector. So the scholarship is unique in that it connects the recipient with a mentor, so a guiding hand to take them through the process, and also a career counselor that is more of a human resources representative specialist that helps them get through school but also apply for that job, that many of which are available right here in southwest Louisiana. So I ask you to take a look at the program, pass it along to your constituents, I've met with several of you about it, but anyone here as well, to bring it home, bring the information home, look it up on the website, and apply, because we have lots still to give. Thanks.
Thank you. So we also wanted to share with you the real economic impact of this. Again, we've had 79 people in the program so far. We anticipate having over 50 opportunities for scholarships in the future next year. But this example is for students who were at Sewella in a 15-week structural welding program. Many of them came to the program making less than $24,000 a year. They were hired by a company here locally, working on a local project, starting at $26 an hour. So when you think of that charitable investment from SASAL and Electrols LNG, it averaged about $4,000 a person to give them this whole package of services, and they are moving from being under $24,000 to about $54,000 a year. So it's really an incredible opportunity for people, whether they're right out of high school or later in life. We've had, the average age so far of people is 33. So it's really people at all different parts of the spectrum. And a key part of this program, like Kim said, is the volunteer in the community who serves as a mentor. And Willie King's gonna tell you a little bit about how that is for him right now.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Police Jury. Some months ago, I had the opportunity to mentor a young man, and Sarah Judson and I, we've done a lot of things together, but I think it's an opportunity. I've had the time of my life mentoring this young man. The first time we met, he seemed a little bit shy, and then every time I looked around, he was calling me and saying, "Okay, let's hang out." And so we hang out almost every day if we can. I'm almost hoping he can't get a job when he's done, so I can keep him. Anyway, we walked in here tonight, and somebody said, "Well, you're gonna be a heavy equipment operator?" He has my card. Now, I don't like it. However, I'm looking at the long-term, and long-term, I hope that Alex can stay around me for some, long-term, because this evening, I called my insurance company and put him on my insurance driving. I'm still moving forward to be his first employer. Yeah. So anyway, I wanna tell you that, for those of you that have not mentored, and this is my first time in this particular program, it's a joy. It's an honor just to see him grow, and I'll tell you, this young man is gonna be something special. I can tell you, it won't be the first time you'll see him. He's gonna make somebody proud, and right now, he's already making me proud. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Kim.
Hello, everyone. This program...
What's your name, sir? Tell us your name.
My name's Alex Jones.
Very good.
This program has been a real experience for me. Starting high school, graduated from Sam Houston as of last year, I started high school with the daughter. I saw myself entering the military, because I want my daughter to know that, no matter what, I won't give up on you. So then later on down the road, I finally graduated, got a text from my cousin saying, "Here's a scholarship. Maybe this'll be best for you," so I wouldn't have to leave. I filled out the scholarship. You know, they asked questions about it. My mom always told me, "Don't look at something as telling a story. Look at it as your testimony." I mean, my life's been rough, in and out, but I really would like to thank these guys for giving me the opportunity to even be here today, to speak to you, and let you know that anything is possible, you just have to want it. And I want it, so this card here means a lot to me every time I see it, because without this card, who knows where I'd be right now.
We're all pulling for you, I promise you.
Yeah, so that, we really wanted you to be able to hear, people who are really participating in the program, and it's changing their lives. And it is because they are committed to it, because they have a volunteer in the community who's mentoring them, and we have great partnerships with Sewella and the ABC School who are really helping make this happen. Here's another picture of some of the students who have already completed their training. These folks are now working in area industry. And I love this picture. This is one because it shows you, one, that it's a female who has now graduated in process technology, so a little bit out of the box there, and it's all about her whole family. As we change lives, like Alex said, it's not only for him, but it's for his whole family. And then together, we are really changing our whole community, and for the better. So we hope that you know a little bit more about this tonight, and you'll see on the screen now the disciplines that we anticipate supporting other people to do in June of next year. 15 and 24-week programs at Sewella and ABC. The applications are available now online on our website, and we really encourage you all, as well as you all that are here in the audience, to let people know about it, to sign up, to volunteer to be a mentor, as well as that they might wanna be somebody that wants to be in the program and gain a new career. Thank you.
Hold on, Ms. Judson, we may have some comments from the jurors. Mr. McMillan?
Sarah, thank you for what you do. Thank you for what the Community Foundation does here in southwest Louisiana. You know, these expansions come with some heartburns. We have a lot of traffic, we have to wait a little longer in the restaurants. When you see something like this, so positive come out, where we possibly saved a young man and mentored him into where he's gonna be productive in society. Thank you. Thank you, SASAL and Area Industries, for what y'all are doing, and I hope you have a lot of people sign up for your scholarships.
Thank you. Thank you, we do, too. And I wanna give a little shout-out to Kevin Guidry, too. He was a mentor in the first round of the program, and had a very successful student who is now mentoring somebody in this round. So, thank you, Kevin.
No, thank you, guys, Sarah. Sarah, could you guys go back to the very first picture?
Maybe.
Right, no, 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 back to Willie, and that. Now, I'm looking at that, and I could swear Willie is the child, and he's... You know I love you, Willie. That's a great picture, Willie.
Mr. Hunter?
Thank you, Mr. President. This particular scholarship program, is this a revolving fund every year, or is this one-time money?
Yes, SASAL and Electrols LNG have both now contributed several times, and it is so successful that we certainly think that there's opportunity for other donors to come forward. I even have a civic club that has talked with me about their interest in supporting the fund, and not only financially, but with mentors as well. So it really is a great collaborative effort of the community.
That's awesome. I'd like to comment broadly on the Community Foundation. I'm a big fan of the Community Foundation, and it only takes a spark to start a flame that grows into a roaring fire, and I think the Community Foundation, right now, is at that stage where eventually, we're gonna see a roaring fire of positivity around this entire community. We already are seeing it. I also like the idea of sustainability. You know, if you care about something in this community, you don't wanna think that when you die, it just dies with you. And that's the great thing about the Community Foundation, is people can donate money and set up opportunities for their love for this community to keep living after they themselves are not here anymore.
Exactly.
So I'm a big fan of what y'all are doing, and thank you.
Thank you. And it really is a team effort, so we're glad that you all allowed us to come and share the story, and we hope that you will tell others about it, and we'll have many people that are a part of this scholarship program next year.
Awesome. Thank you, Mr. President.
Any other comments? Thank you, Mr. Hunter. Ms. Mayo?
Yes. I had an opportunity to meet with Kim, as well as Nicole, concerning this program, and I spoke with Kim and Nicole about doing a workshop, well, hopefully getting the workshop done at one of the community parks in my district, and I'm just hoping everybody takes advantage of this opportunity, because it's a great opportunity for many. And keep up the good work.
Yes, thank you for sharing that. We are looking at other opportunities in addition to scholarship to educate people on opportunities in the workforce. So, thank you for sharing.
Any other comments? Thank you, Ms. Judson.
Thank you.
Item seven, consideration of adopting a resolution recognizing the members of the southwest Louisiana Legislative Delegation for their diligence and dedication during the 2016 regular and first and second extraordinary legislative sessions, and for their collaboration in securing key state funding for various parish-wide projects, programs, and initiatives. Mr. Bean?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a few comments on this, and at the end, I'll ask you to come down and pass out resolutions for those here. But we are in the season of Thanksgiving, and a group that is very deserving of the thanks, all of our thanks, is the delegation. And tonight, we wanna formally recognize their leadership, especially in what were three grueling legislative sessions, dealing with a lot of problems that are important to this state. I'll give a few examples, though, you don't always hear about these, but behind the scenes, there's a lot of important things... the scenes, there's a lot of important things going on with our local delegation involved. One, Representative Mike Danahay, who is here tonight, I believe, also with Representative Johnny Gwynn and Representative Stephen Dwight. Mike was appointed, he's actually Chairman of the House and Governmental Affairs Committee. Now, this committee works on a lot of things that affect local government. Maybe the most prominent this year was the legislation that passed that led to calling the constitutional amendment that made some very reform-minded changes at the Registrar Voters Office. That amendment, unlike some of the others, passed very strongly and you can thank Mike directly for him and his committee on that. And although the fiscal affairs of the state are constrained, Mark Abraham is a member of House Appropriations and Senator Ronnie Johns is a member of Senate Finance, helped how to fashion these cuts while carefully listening to concerns here of southwest Louisiana. Of course, even with the cuts, some revenues were needed and on the front line were newly-elected Representative Mr. Dwight and long-serving Senator John Smith of House Ways and Means and Senate Revenue and Fiscal Affairs. But the whole delegation worked together throughout, it was actually nineteen weeks, which, that is a lot of time to be away from, from home on dealing with these, with these tough things. But those were only needed for the tax votes that would generate the revenue needed just to keep our economy strong and our families safe and productive. And finally, a special thank you to Senator Johns, Representative Dwight. Obviously, everybody works hard, but capital outlay is extremely hard to come by these days, but they were relentless in their pursuit of funding for some much-needed infrastructure projects here in Calcasieu, even with the cash flow problem. So, we probably don't do this enough, but at the direction of the jury, we wanted to put this on the agenda tonight and just publicly thank our delegation members, those who could make it tonight and those who couldn't, and greatly appreciate their efforts. And at this point, I guess I'd ask President Landry if he could get the resolutions and Mike and Johnny and Stephen, if y'all could just come up and certainly any words they may have as well.
Thank you, I appreciate y'all being here. Do you, I have, I have three. You have the rest. Okay, we're good. Very good. Y'all want to say a few words to them?
I could read the whole resolution, but I know...
Well, and I'm glad you said that because I'm not sure whether I should thank you until I read the resolution, so I'm not sure what's in it. No, thank y'all very much for, for this. You know, I appreciate what you do. It's great being what I call home. I was once a member of this body. And we did deal with some very difficult situations in the last few years, actually, and they're still ongoing, but we're still trying to work towards resolution on that. I want to thank you, of course. I also want to thank the citizens of southwest Louisiana for entrusting in us their confidence by putting us in those positions. We are very cognizant of that fact. We never forget that. We often hear from our constituents, which we encourage them to do. Many of them are here tonight, as you well know, but you know, we work for the citizens of southwest Louisiana. And I will say, the Legislative Delegation has always been one that's been very cohesive. We hear that continuously from other legislators as well as other people in state government. They like working with the southwest Louisiana delegation because we do work very well together in approaching the various situations that we, are brought to us in the legislature. So, on behalf of Senator Ronnie Johns, Senator Dan Moorish, Representative A.B. Franklin, and Representative Dorothy SuHill, who could not be here tonight, they're out of town, as well as the members that are here tonight, we thank y'all very much.
Y'all always take the mic when they give you an opportunity, but I just wanted to thank y'all for our working relationship. We heard from y'all almost daily when we're working on these capital outlays, if it wasn't Brian or Kevin or even Judd Barris, who I don't even represent, but he, he was texting me and calling me and asking me about different projects. You know, I feel like we have, also have a great working relationship. We worked, you know, as a united front to try to get these projects back and I'm glad it worked out because there's a lot of other police juries around the state that didn't get any projects, so I'm glad it worked out. Wish there was more to bring back and more to brag about, but I'm glad we were able to bring a little bit back. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Good deal. I'm Johnny Gwynn, I'm from District Thirty-seven over in Jennings. And you know what? Being a state representative, working with the police jury and the citizens of southwest Louisiana, it's really an honor and a privilege and we've really done some good things for southwest Louisiana. There's a lot of good jobs and you know, the quality of life should improve for every citizen of this area, especially the old people that own real estate, because I think the real estate prices are getting awful expensive compared to Jeff Davis Parish. But nevertheless, there's a lot of people that put into the efforts of getting monies accumulated to bring back home to the state and I do want to thank each of the members of the Calcasieu Parish Police Jury. Y'all have done a diligent job and you have guided us through in a lot of instances and it really is a good team effort. Thank you for everything you do and thank everyone of y'all from Calcasieu Parish.
Item eight, take appropriate action on application for liquor and beer permits. Mr. Crane?
Mr. President, we have one new application and seven renewals. We recommend that they be approved.
Got a motion by Mr. Fornham, second by Mr. Guidry. Any discussion? Any objections here? None motion carries. Item nine, consideration of approving payment of all current expenses. Got a motion by Mr. McMillan and a second by Mr. Latour. Is there any discussion? Any objections here? None motion carries. Item ten, consideration of approving amendments to the regular meeting that the police jury dated October twentieth, twenty sixteen. Got a motion by Mr. Scott and a second by Mr. Fornham. Is there any discussion? Any objections here? None motion carries. Okay, we're going to go ahead and pull item, item twenty-one. We're going to go to twenty-one. There are some extra seats up front if any of y'all care to sit down. Okay, item twenty-one, take appropriate action on a request by Old Penn LLC to rezone from A1 agriculture to heavy industrial restricted, to allow restricted heavy industrial development of a landfill at the intersection of Highway one oh eight west and Gum Island Road in Ward Seven. The Planning and Zoning Board met on Tuesday, November fifteenth, twenty sixteen, and voted unanimously seven against to recommend that the request be denied and there was one recusal. I have a motion by Mr. Barris and a second by Mr. Fornham to defer for...
Ninety days. It'll be the first regular meeting after the ninety days, which will be March second, two thousand seventeen.
We'll defer until March second. And Mr. Barris, would you like to...
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. President. Everybody here that's here for this, you know it's been a long road. I've gotten to know a lot of people a lot better throughout this whole process. My staff, my jurors, and a lot of the residents that I'm fortunate enough to represent. I understand this is probably a bit frustrating at this time, but you know, we've got to get our minds, everybody's got to get their information. We can't, we can't go with this half-cocked. If some people need some more information, well then, we'll give them some time to get that. We've got to get this right. And I think this is the best route to go and you know, we will stay engaged. I'm not going, I'm not sitting here saying, "Hey, I'll see you guys in ninety days." Your, my resources are still your resources from here on out. You can hone your message, we'll take the opportunity to hone our message as I'm sure the applicant will. So I appreciate everyone's unbelievable interest and effort in this topic and it hasn't gone unnoticed. So, just, I know that's a small concession, but you guys united, you got your stuff together, so let's just, let's just move to the next step. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, thank you, Mr. Barris. Is there any further, Mr. Fornham?
Thank you, Mr. President. Over the past couple of months, I've worked very closely with Judd on this, this particular project and it's, it's been a somewhat of a painful ordeal in some ways, very enlightening in other ways and I, I really appreciate the engagement that the public has, has shown in this, this particular project. It's, it's your voice that needs to be heard and it can't be heard if you stay at home. And getting out here and the numbers that you're showing today show how important your voice will be heard. And we are listening to it and, and, and that's what America's built on. So, stay engaged. Stay engaged on a daily basis and we'll keep y'all informed every step of the way as this thing moves forward. And if there's anything that I can do to help with the situation, don't hesitate to call me. I will answer the phone anytime you call. So, thank y'all for being here.
All right, Mr. Fornham. Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Any objections? Hearing none, motion carries.
Mr. President, point of order, I think we should have a five-minute recess.
We'll, we'll have a five-minute recess, that's fine. After the five-minute recess, we will address item fifteen.